Good morning. The time is nine oh one AM. It is November ninth, two thousand and twenty, Monday. I'm going to call this regular term meeting of B County Commissioners' Court to order. We are located at B County Courthouse Commissioners' courtroom number one ten, one oh five West Corfus Christie Street, Beville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. I believe the Youth Director with First United Methodist Church, Jack Cochran, is here this morning to lead us in prayer. If everybody would please stand. Does anybody else so moved that they'd like to lead us in?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all the blessings you've provided for us. We ask you, please watch over the judges and the court. Please make best decisions possible for all the people we represent. We thank everyone for being here. Please bless us and watch over us during this pandemic. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Well done, everybody. Thank you. All right. We can now, we'll recognize any visitors that are in the courtroom. Anybody that would like to stand up and identify themselves. There's no pressure at all. We have Mr. Lenny's in the audience, and then it's Tom. We, excuse me because I'm drawing blanks with the mess. We have members of ICE, our engineers, and Mr. Luna, Flint Britton, that's who it is. Thank you. With the S F U.
Yeah, the S F U.
Thank you all for being here this morning. Anybody that I left off? No, good. Commissioner Salazar, I think you can get some.
Not much to report in the know of, Commissioner. I've been busy with my election, and it's over with.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Everything running smooth in the precinct. I know that the Rodden Bridge is doing a fantastic job getting Memorial Yard ready for operations sometime in the near future. And that's what I'll have to report for.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Been busy. I mean, Rodden Bridge is taking care of a few problems back on Airport Road and Orange Land, all those areas. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I had a lot of calls from the residents from that area, and they appreciate your attention on this deal. Have a meeting with VDA's this afternoon, and I do want to, first of all, Laura Warnix, big thank you for running the election. It really was.
Good job, Laura.
You know, as much as you had to contend with, and then, you know, all the locations and everything else, all the extra people, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Just normal business. Again, sent a letter to Nick with Techside area in Warren County. Have about four inch little eye issues, all bothering around Skidmore, Tynan, three fifteen year high. He's assured me if I'll just contact with him, he'll find the right people in Corpus to talk to. If not, he'll give me the doors I need to kick hands with, get the answers. So, other than that, just normal business. Driving around, looking at the pressure popping up, the rain's all over the top of it, mowing and everything. So, we're looking good. Looking good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all. Okay, for me, two things. One, I believe it was last Tuesday, I attended the City of Beville meeting, council members meeting, and to present on behalf of our local district judges, a request that the City Beville annex the Expo Center to allow our district judges, and our county court as well, to safely conduct jury trials utilizing proper social distancing and all the other complicating mechanisms that are required in order to proceed in courtroom fashion in the age of COVID. So, we are, and I'd like to express both the counties, on behalf of the county and myself individually, my appreciation to City Council, John Benson, the mayor, who I've been working with on this, and they've been, they've been doing all of the heavy lifting, and Gabby, the city secretary, Gabby Hernandez. They've done an excellent job so far, and we really appreciate everything that they've done, so that we can accommodate our district judges in this way. We're very fortunate to have a very nice Expo Center, and the use of it will allow us to get some felony criminal trials moving forward, as well as some necessary child custody cases, CPS cases proceeding to trial as well. It's not, there's no way really to understate the complicating difficulties of our district judges and how they've been having to adjust in COVID to handle the continual case of, you know, continual accumulation of criminal cases, as well as important civil matters and family matters. So, my kudos to them as well. Hopefully by the beginning of December, we will have, we'll have this structure set up. We've done it once before when the courthouse was being renovated, and so we already have the groundwork and the process that's necessary. So, I'd like to thank them for that. Second thing I comment on, since we do have a short docket, or short docket, a short agenda today, I had the honor and the privilege to speak at the Marine Corps Ball by our local Marine Corps detachment, number one 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 four four two. And I'd never attended the Marine Corps Ball. Commissioner Salazar was there, as well as Sheriff Southmaid, Judge Shaw Walter, and former Commissioner Rodriguez was there as well, new CBC trustee. And it was great. It was really, really a neat experience. I'd never been before. I'm sure, Commissioner, you've been every year probably, and just really, lots of really cool, pomp and circumstance, and a great way to reinvigorate, renew, or to celebrate the pride that we all have with our current and former military service members, specifically the United States Marine Corps. I was able to speak for, I don't know, the other guys that were there might be able to be more specific as to exactly how long I spoke, since they didn't serve any food until after I was done. But I think conservatively, it's probably twenty-five, thirty minutes, and since we do have a short agenda, what I'd like to do at this time is just go back through that entire speech. It was a lot of fun, and.
It's really way too close.
That's all I've got. We'll move on. Public comment. Do we have anybody down for public comment this morning?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Warnix, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good morning, Laura Warnix, election administrator. I'd like to start out by thanking the voters of B County for coming out and turning out for the election, for their patience for us getting started through the drive-through. That week, we served almost twenty-five hundred voters through the drive-through, so it was a great success. I do want to thank the commissioners, all of you and the judge for your support during this. I couldn't have done it without the help of getting everything allowed to use the Expo for early voting, because there's no way we would have been able to accomplish early voting, ma'am. The biggest thank you I have to do this point though is the maintenance department. They came out after hours. They were there through everything. All I had to do is make a phone call, and they were there to take care of it. They helped with everything, from the lifting and everything that we didn't do. So, I'd like to really tell them how much I appreciate them, and I thank them. And just thanks to the voters. We came out with almost, I think we're sitting right now, we have just today the last thing for the FCA's and all to come in, and are about to meet the last time, but we should be finishing up, and we should be right around fifty-five percent of our registered voters showed up.
Wow. How was that four years ago? What was the number?
I'm sorry, sir?
What was the number four years ago?
I don't know the number exactly, but I know it was not to that. It was a little over fifty percent at that time. I'm gonna, next time when I do everything on, when we do canvas, I'll have all those numbers and stuff ready up for everything. So, I didn't put them together once and we weren't quite through. And so, all the, everything turned out great on it. We had a few little things that we had to check on, but no problems. I'm doing the partial manual count for the state this morning, or this afternoon. We have one tide situation in one of the entities that we may do a runoff, but they may draw. I haven't, we haven't finished up with that yet. We're, we're finished all of that. We'll know for sure what they're gonna do.
You piqued our interest.
It's funny, I see. It's funny, it's funny, I see for their third position on their, on their board. So, everything else was accounted for. So, I appreciate it. Thank y'all very much. Thanks to voters. Thanks to B County.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anybody else who wishes to make a public comment at this time? Moving on. Agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative danger. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge.
Move to approve and present. I'll second with a con here.
I have a motion in a second. Commissioner DeWitt, make your seat.
Yes, looking over the budget amendments, one thing or another, there is a grant that our elections administrative received to help in the voting. I looked up the Center for Techno, Technological and Civic Life last night to see who in the heck they were. They gave us over sixty-two thousand dollars. Turns out, Mark Zuckerberg donated several hundred million to that entity. So, I was, I was impressed. Let's just say I was impressed because it's a, from what I read, and I looked at the entire thing, there was no partisan shift. There was this, we want to be able to give money to help the elections people have fair and impartial elections. And that's the way I took it, and my appreciation goes out to them, and especially to our election minister for finding this money, because a lot of places in the United States didn't notice it was there, and there were millions of dollars available. So, thank you, ma'am, and thank Zuckerberg for this vote.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, Laura did it very quickly, and so she brought it in very quickly to the court. So, it was great for our election.
And because of now, that sixty-two thousand dollars is, won't have to be expended by local government entities in B County, including, like, the school district.
Yes, sir.
The school district, this is helping fund part of their stuff, so they won't have to pay. So, this is a good thing. That's over this, sir.
No, thank you. Any other comments, questions? April, anything to add?
No, unless there was any question.
Anything to go out?
No. Everything was good.
We would know if something stuck out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Three of us attended the virtual conference back in August, and the cost was a hundred dollars, but then it shows zero. We received no invoices. Well, we got one Friday.
Yeah.
And it's a hundred dollars. So, I realize, I apologize already for going back into last year's budget with the travel doctor, but I submitted time this month.
Perfect. We're still paying twenty twenty, so probably for another three weeks.
I didn't get my.
Okay.
I'll give it to you. You want that?
I received it also. I didn't attend.
You got one.
Did you register?
I got it. No.
Did you register?
We were due, it was nice enough to register everybody.
Oh, thank you.
No, no. You registered. That's right. But I didn't get the, I didn't get the bill that.
Didn't have mine.
I already gave mine.
If y'all, if y'all attended, just submit it, and we'll, we'll get that paid.
My comments are all on this.
But there, was there a travel form submitted?
No, it was registration. So, I submitted. I didn't know where to put it. I put it on a travel form. It was registration.
Okay, that's fine.
But all was forwarded.
Thank you.
Is there anything further?
No.
Okay. There's nothing further. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Deliberate and consider action on the following item. Agenda item number eight, B area partnership request to alter the interior appearance of the Galloway Building, I believe. Did I see Mr. Snyder? No, I didn't. Okay. Nobody is here on behalf of the.
Did we let VAC know that we were on the agenda?
Okay. Well, they didn't know that they were to be here. So, that's okay. I can tell you exactly what they wanted to do. I think it's cool. That was really, yeah, that was a really good language apology. I think, I think it's a very interesting idea that has merit. I'm only concerned about the condition of the interior of the building as a result of it, which is why I wanted to bring it before you guys. So, as you know, VAC utilizes Galloway Building. They have an idea. They have pretty plain walls inside. They're white. What they'd like to do is they would like to invite one or more, through the CBC Art Department, one or more CBC College students to paint mural or murals on the walls to, and I presume they have, and they're going to not just give them completely free poetic license, but will provide some guidelines, recommendations from the VAC board. But they called in, just wanted to ask permission to see what we thought about them having this done on the interior of the building.
There are many things about the building that have been on the subject. My first blush is that, nothing political, and I think possibly that this court should review the items before they're put on the wall. Of course, they can always be painted over, but I would, I would like to see the, like, this section of wall is gonna have fish or whatever. I think we should review and make the final decision on, yes, if it's our building. Yes, go ahead and put those in. That's, that's my take. I would rather do that than come back later and somebody going, man, I can't believe y'all let this put that up there.
Sounds like committee used to.
I'll take it.
Okay. And I was, I was gonna suggest, I don't know, I mean, I would think that the VAC board would be pretty.
I'll let you know today. I forgot to put that in my report, but I have a meeting today at noon. I'll bring that to their attention. I'll bring that concern.
Okay.
And I would much rather have the CBC art class than have Sheriff Southmaid's group to have.
Well, and like I said, the crazy grace is another sort of white paint would take down something, but maybe, anyway.
In that interest, that interest.
Yeah. And the VAC board made up of, well, Tuesday, I don't think it was political or.
No, nothing, nothing there is on that line. And I'm sure it's promote businesses.
Yeah.
Something similar like Navy Army.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I'm sure it's gonna promote businesses within the.
That looks pretty good.
Yeah.
I think it's a cool idea.
Thank you.
That was, that was definitely a school.
Definitely a school in this same.
Absolutely. That's right.
Watch your commissioner.
I'll make the motion go forward to this and allow the board to take a look at it.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number nine, request by Stella Development LLC for abandonment by the county of a dedicated twenty-foot wide alley within block fifty-eight of this town in Skidmore, B County, Texas. Mrs. Thompson's is here this morning representing Stella Development. We did receive some paperwork from Mrs. Thompson, which I'm sure everybody's already reviewed. And Mrs. Thompson, you have the floor. Please tell us what you would like us to do and how we should proceed, if it's something that the will of the board decides they want to proceed with.
Thank you. Good morning. As the judge said, I'm here on behalf of Stella Development. The individuals behind Stella Development are Clayton Lenny and a business of fifty out of his, and Stella Development owns block fifty-eight there in Skidmore, the entire block. Mr. Lenny actually grew up a few, a few blocks, like a couple streets over from that area, and I believe his parents still reside there. And the intention is to sell sections or portions of the block for the building of homesites. They currently have interest in selling a portion of the block. The buyers are interested in being able to situate the home so that the existence of the alley is a little bit of a concern, and their preference would be that that alley is abandoned and not an issue in the future. And it's about a twenty-foot, twenty-foot wide alley that runs through the entire length of that block. And of course, the alley is not in use, and there are no utility issues. There have been some very nice homes built in recent years on the side of Skidmore, and hopefully that will continue. And I think we could all agree that in terms of contributing to the tax base, that's, that's something that we would all want to see there. And so Stella Development is asking that the county consider abandoning this alley just for the, for the purpose of allowing them to move forward with development and selling these blocks for homesites.
Who owns the other side of the alley?
Well, they own the entire block.
Okay, so the alley's in the middle.
Correct. It's completely surrounded by property that they own.
I can add to this. Those of you who haven't seen the block presently, Clayton Lenny's group has, has cleaned it up very well. Just a moved out lot now. Very clean. It's, we've been back and forth on the phone trying to get this paperwork going. Finally got it to go through, so if you want, my, my, my motion would be to accept this, this agreement.
I'll say, I'll, I'll concur with them. And something to remember, too, it's twenty-foot wide by three hundred foot long, so that's, that's the package right there that comes back to the county.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Thompson, what is, what is the process? If we vote on this right now, then we can sign the order, and that's it?
Correct. The proposed order includes all the necessary language under the Texas Transportation Code, and that signed order is then reported in the county, county records, and that's the transfer title.
And Rodden Bridge, I don't think gets involved in this, do you?
No.
No, no public hearing requirement or something like that?
None. It's not in the.
We've done that before, and it's a very simple process. Once we prove it, just for your signature, of course, filed through by the county attorney.
Now, now it's everybody. Still, it's a housekeeping issue for us to help maintain some of the counter. And again, put that piece back on the actual.
That's right. So then, would the motion be amended to allow for final approval of the form submitted by Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah, while recommendations approve this form, it's to be assigned in the files.
Okay, thank you. You have amended motion in a second. Is there anything further, Mrs. Thompson, we need to consider?
Nothing further.
Anything, any other questions, comments, discussion items? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you.
Agenda item number ten, discuss new jail heating, ventilation, and air conditioning construction issues and availability of potential claims against third parties related thereto. Do we have, I guess this is my item. I wanted to keep this on the agenda to let Commissioners' Court know that while we are very, very encouraged by the continued cooperation of our experts, our engineers, architects, our construction team, and as well as ECM, our construction managers, they're continuing to meet, I believe, weekly, bi-weekly, in some instances, talking on the phone every day to try to work through this issue that we're having at the jail. We are also continuing to protect our own interests, so we have let ECM send a notice letter to our architects that we are potentially looking at a Arizona missions claim. But that is more than anything to protect our position moving forward, and I'll say that I'm reasonably confident that the parties that we contracted with two years ago, two and a half years ago, to, to this jail project together and bring it to fruition, will continue to do everything that they need to do to ensure that B County, at the end of the day, not any of the experts, but B County gets the jail that B County contracted for initially. And so, we do appreciate everything that they're doing to, to get us to that point. Does anybody have any discussion?
My, my only comment is that I'd like to see, and in date, to see when the engineers are gonna figure this thing out, because they're, they're professionals. They think about, it's just a problem, but I'd like to see, when is this gonna be complete? That's my question.
Well, since you're talking about the engineers, Commissioner, we do have an RFQ out currently, and it has been extended to this coming Friday, the thirteenth. So, once that is completed, ECM has agreed to score them, and then you should, the whole court should be getting the RFQ package today so that you can start reviewing it, and then you'll get the scoring package, and we plan on bringing those top, a couple or three to court to interview when that process, you know, when we get there. Hopefully, maybe next week, if not, the week after Thanksgiving.
That's right. We may have a special call meeting, but my office will be inside of the jail.
One comment I'd like to make, since there is a representative here from the architect that, you may or may not be aware of this, the humidifier, dehumidifiers that's putting in are taking out fifty-five gallons a day of liquid, or more. And, and we understand that now we're going into the winter season, and the humidity's a little lower, so it may be lower, but fifty-five gallons a day they put, trying to get rid of, that's a lot.
It is a lot. Yes, you may, Mr. Britton. You may have the floor if you'd like to come up and give us a few comments. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it. Can I, I would start out by saying, you've got a letter that's part of your, your agenda. It's in the, in the packet, and we would disagree with the comment that the engineering and the architectural team are doing the same. Let me remind you, if it wasn't for us going outside, you wouldn't even know that the exterior of the building is like enclosed, like it's supposed to per the document. And one of the things that I keep hearing is, we're talking about the engineers. We've said from the very beginning, even from two thousand and nineteen, we've got documentation that we've sent to the contractor, said, this is incorrect, this is incorrect. There's two issues to that. One is the installation, and the other one is the setting. So, you can install something, but if the settings aren't correct, it's not gonna work properly. And so, we've said from the very beginning, we have kicked the letter back to the judge. I'm sure you guys have seen it, but basically indicated that unless it's installed per the design, it's not gonna work properly. So, when I hear folks saying, you know, we need to get the engineers there to fix it, when you're asking us to fix something we didn't design, it's just like taking your vehicle to an auto mechanic's place, and you know a little bit about auto mechanics, and you bring it, you know, you pick it up, and you take it down the road, and you know something's wrong. And, yeah, he, he might have changed out the water pump, but he did it incorrectly. Until the, until the utilities and everything is placed in that building, the HVAC systems, the electric, whatever it is, until it's installed properly, you can't even determine if we've done something wrong, because it's not installed correctly. From the very beginning, our push has been, have Turner install it per the document. And when we met with the judge, we openly said, if you get it installed per the documents, and there's something wrong, that's what we have insurance for. We'll come back and we'll fix it and make it work. But at this point in this stage, it's not installed correctly. So, when you're asking my engineers to go back in there and fix it, you're asking them to fix something that they didn't even design. So, I guess the question is, do you want to just fix something that, that's hardly just working, which summer's gonna come back around, you're probably gonna have the same issues that you have now? Or just have contractor install it per the documents. Once they finish that, then we can figure out if it's truly working or not. And if I can say something else, if it's not installed correctly, it's not a warranty issue, as far as I'm concerned.
So, BSW is actually saying that it wasn't installed correctly?
We've said that from the very beginning. We've got punch lists over and over and over again from Jason Banzer that's been on the site. And I would love to, I would love to come back down here and just walk you through the building and show you. In the process of our conversations, and you put out an RFQ that said, we want the building commissioned. And that RFQ was for commissioning the HVAC items, mechanical items, and electrical items. That just basically ensures that you've got what the drawings say that you're supposed to have. And even in that RFQ, part of that is checking the exterior envelope to make that, make sure it's enclosed. But apparently, that commissioning agent told us that he was never, he was never hired to, to make sure the envelope on the sheriff's office was enclosed, only on the jail site. But when we popped the tile and hit it with the heat gun, you could see the heat come into the building. When we were there for four or five hours, there were a number of things that we found in there, which was one. And so, again, our push would be the same, which it's always been, just install it per the document. MEP, our MEP guys will come down here as often as is necessary. They're not planning on disappearing to make sure it's done correctly. And like I said, if after we've got everything in there like it's supposed to be, we're sure that it'll, that it will run like it's supposed to. Right now, the biggest problem you've got is that there's been so much human air that's been in that building, the air conditioning. The air conditioning system, even if it was working properly, properly, wouldn't be able to take it out. So you have the dehumidifiers in there taking out, taking it out now. Once the system is actually working as designed, you're still probably going to have to keep those dehumidifiers running for a while to take more of that humidity out before the air conditioner can actually take care of that and keep it level. So, but like I said, we're willing to come down here and be with you and walk through the building and talk about issues. I would love to have Turner right behind us and if, if Jason Manser says, this is wrong and needs to be fixed, why don't two of those guys peel off it? Go fix it. I mean, we want to see some action on the project as much as y'all did. And we were very thrilled to get the project, it's my hometown, you know. And it's just been incredible disappointment on, on the way this thing has ended, or it's not even ended yet.
No, it's not ending, we don't have a, when it's going to end.
That's right, that's right.
You know, that's, that's what makes it certain.
And I can't, you know, you asked for end date, it's been a possibility for us to give you an end date because until those things inside the building are, are completed correctly, I, I don't know when that's going to happen.
Now, Clint, this has been communicated to ECM, I, I'm sure, right?
Uh, we have, we have, we have.
And Turner?
We have it, oh, yeah, we've been in constant contact with Turner, off and on. And I have to talk to Jason Manser, he's the one that's running point on the project deck, he knows the project better than anybody.
So the equipment that y'all designed, is the equipment that's out there, it just wouldn't install correctly, is that, that's what you're saying?
Well, when we walked through, we found out that we had registers that were smaller than what was what's been drawn. So if you have a register that's smaller, that means we've got less air that's being pushed, pushed into that room. So all that affects each other. So we got registers that are the wrong size. You know, one of the things that's occurring now is they're pouring vegetable oil down into the drains because of the smell that's coming out. When there's trap primers, they were supposed to be in the tanks and those were not put in. So there's, you know, Hunter was supposed to come back and put in the other trap primers that sit right underneath the, the actual drain. And I don't think that's. So I mean, there's just a number of things that we just need to go through and make sure that they're done. And I guess that comes to ECM.
I know that one thing that happened recently, we had some cold weather and when they turned the heater on, it melted one of the smoke detectors because it's too close to the heat. So that's, you know, that's more insulation than anything else, getting it put along.
Right, right. I mean, you know, anytime you, anytime you open up a new building, there's going to be issues.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah, always happens, always happens. But the response that we received basically is not that we're going to throw more people on the site and we're going to get this finished. The response we got was having another engineer from out of state, who we don't believe is licensed and is state-affected, tell us what's wrong with the system. Well, if there's something wrong with the system after we get everything done correctly, then we'll, like I said, we'll take care of it. It does us no good to walk away from the project and have a forename and go after another project in the future. And you are our best folks to be saying good things about it, so, anyway.
So who would have to sign off that the building was ready for occupation without the?
It's got to be commissioned, right? They got to ask for a commission for them to go review to see if it can be, uh, they can get in, correct?
Yeah, the jail argument has to be agreed by the jail commission. So they have to do the smoke purge set, test and, and go through the building, make sure all the locks work and et cetera, et cetera. And they, of course, they pass it, so. But we've done that before and there have been lingering issues after that where a contractor had to take care of. That's not, that's not an abnormal issue, abnormal thing. Because again, as you go through and you start using things, and this doesn't work exactly right, you know. It's not always the contractor because they've got subs that are coming in and doing work. And then you might have some sort of system that's, you know, opening the doors, the locks and system, locks and stuff. And of course, that's not put in by the contractor, he's got an expert that's hired to do that, so they can get back, get, have, have to get the expert back out. Uh, there's a lot of things that are going on in that building, there's a lot of things that have been fixed. But I mean, at this point, like I said, I, I'd really like us to get on site and just walk through with Jason Manser and Michael Smith and ECM and Turner and just talk about the issue.
I think the court would like y'all to get on site, I want to get something.
Have y'all asked us to do that?
We have not.
Okay.
Sounds like, sounds like a plan that y'all may be get together and do that.
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to add something, you brought it up, the fire, the tire sensor, what had happened, it melted. The heat came on and melted the fire sensor. Fire troll came in to look at it and red flagged us, we didn't know it was red flagged. The state got notified, we can't be red flagged. There's certain things to kick in once we're red flagged. So what we meant was the fire chief, we had to start a fire watch, which is basically the same thing we do in the jail anyway, once an hour again. We're always in the jail anyway, but we had to do paperwork. That was about twenty-four hours, fire troll came in to fix the problem and next day it was re-tagged down. But it's, you know, it shouldn't have happened, but it's, it's happened.
Saying, I'm sure that we're all going to make some calls and stuff like that, but if you can notice by the door that the quarter is off or something, this, this meeting will take place or something like that? If not, we can push it in the tent. Yeah, but, but we need it to happen because we can't have a building like that.
Yeah.
What, what else, what else has happened in the plan, if you will? We've been holding the previous jail operational, even though it's unoccupied, thinking that if something really, really bad happens, we may have to move back into it. It's costing us several thousand dollars, most of the utilities, it's probably going to be our next agenda to go ahead and, and shut it down and move out and stuff. So we're, we're, we're getting against some walls, so I think the meeting that you talked about is going to be very opportune. And I appreciate you bringing that up.
Well, I'll talk with ECM and I'll talk to Turner and sue his insects and have an outside meeting.
And it could be that we can get that done before we bring in this expert engineer from out of state.
Yeah.
You know, let's, let's, let's keep this as, as on even keel as we can, but let's don't throw any rocks.
Right, I, I agree. And, you know, and the, the, the expert engineer that you're going to hire, and this isn't new, we talked about this at the end of the day. If you're going to hire somebody to do that, if we get to that point, which I'm hoping we don't get to that point, because at this point, nobody knows the system better than Dina, we can talk. It's going to take a while for that individual to get this going and figure out how they work. But that individual has to have jail experience. We have smoke purge systems that are required by the jail commission and other items that are required by jail standards. And they have to have jail experience, otherwise they're going to make some mistakes in reading those plans. Uh, there's, there's going to be stuff on there that they don't understand, in my opinion. So.
That's good information here.
Anyway, I'll contact ECM and get back with you, Judge.
Thank you so much, Mr. Grant, for your comments and for being here this morning and for continuing to work, working down, thank you. Is there anything further?
Thank you, of course.
Okay, there's no actions in the next action item. Agenda item number eleven, approval of proposed non-comprehensive partial settlement agreement between B County and Turner Construction Company in connection with construction of the sheriff's office new jail project. Y'all reviewed the proposed settlement agreement, there are some final changes that you see hammered out. They are, except for the one that I'm going to specify, they are non-substantive. Overall, the one change to the actual document is the entry of the actual settlement number. And, and that number is on the spreadsheet that was.
We're still at two hundred?
Two hundred thousand dollars, yeah. And so you can see through the, if you look, uh, I think, what page is it?
Page two?
It's the very left, oh, page eleven B.
Eleven B.
Okay. If you look at it, it'll, it'll show Turner was requesting four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. They submitted costs, a expenditure request for four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. ECM recommended two hundred and two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And we've approved two hundred thousand dollars as a, as a payment to resolve this four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar claim. Vast majority of the claim, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, was actually larger. This was the delay due to weather, inclement weather, or is it delayed just because the construction company didn't get done by the time that they had contractually agreed to? And so even, even that number is smaller than what the initial request from Turner had been. ECM did a good job negotiating on behalf of, of, of the county to, to get us the settlement number. This doesn't, this isn't a final, full and final settlement, this doesn't mark the end, as we were just briefly commenting with the jail project. But it does close down a vast majority of the open issues between Turner Construction and B County with respect to the construction of the jail. Are there any questions, comments?
I got one for this camp too, what, what's, what's left or where are we at, where are we standing with the findings from there?
Well, if this is Turner, I don't think, I don't think there's much, if there's any purchase orders, it might be still furniture. But I, I'm not quite sure, there's, there's just, it's, it's, it's not anything that, I mean, that the account can't handle. I mean, if there's even, if there is anything, Commissioner, but I don't have that much time right now.
Judge, if you will, talking about the weather issues, you weren't on the court at that time. But it was very contentious about the weather days because supposedly they weren't per the oil weather, one thing and another. But there were day after day after day of rain events back in there. Even when we had the, the first walkthrough that the auditor and all of us went through, there was water about that deep in a lot of the rooms and buildings. So I do have sympathy for Turner for the weather event search and I, I, I make a motion to approve this.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second.
Second with Tom.
I have a second. Motion in a second, Commissioner for these.
Yep. Judge, at that time, like Commissioner Dewitt said, there was quite a bit of rain days and we worked with them in the months of November and December and January asking them and they to make up days on weekends, but they refused to make up any days. All they wanted to do was a five-day work week period. And they could have caught up a whole bunch and they turned over two general forms or whatever they have out there at the time, during that period of time. They just wouldn't hear it, all they wanted to do was work Monday through Friday.
Yeah. Also, some of.
My sympathy for them and about that a little.
Yeah, and let me add too, that when they were told to bring in X number of people, they brought in X number of people. And so that delayed that also. So in a respective turn, they didn't, they didn't, to me, they didn't fulfill. So actually, my sympathy is even smaller than the.
And my concern is that we have a facility right now that has a big issue with the ACs and yet we keep paying these people that build it for us. That's my, my, you know, I'm sure a lot of people think in that way, we're still paying these guys, yes, the facility is not as smart.
And, and Commissioner, it's not only those guys, it's everything outside of that.
It's the jobs.
The old jail, this and that and everything else.
They're personally responsible for this.
Lot of money.
Yeah, they are.
A contractor, so.
Yeah, they are.
So that, that might be, why, why are we putting more money into Turner when we still have issues out there?
Well, and I'm not going to disagree with any of y'all, except there's a brick wall down the road and we've got a lot of issues to resolve before we get to that brick wall. And if paying two hundred thousand dollars keeps that brick wall ahead of us, I think it's a good thing to do. And ECM has recommended we pay this, have we gone along with our representation?
No, except with meetings, I mean, from four hundred to two hundred thousand, try to settle some of this stuff. And it's not all, that, that, that's zero amounts of compensation by any means.
No.
They, they, they still got a lot pending out there. So, and they still got to come back and finish and fix something they need to do. But yeah, as far as my going back, they had opportunities to come and make up those days, they, they just didn't do it.
And, and again, from Clint's point of view, they did what they wanted, basically, they installed the system that.
I, I'm not disagreeing with y'all at all.
Again, like, we don't have that much money left that we have.
Commissioner Henry, you're a good point, they, they, they stepped out of electrical company, remember? And they were supposed to have about thirty-five guys to come on the site and they unloaded a van with like six people.
Yeah.
So they were understaffed, I mean, they were hiring understaffed people and they were just.
I think they were. And if I remember correctly, your project managers, you were talking about the general form, they didn't leave because they want to get rid of them. They got out for some other reason. I mean, we, we, we all know, they left because somebody saw something that we're not seeing and they just.
They were coming out there.
Personally.
No, you got.
But no, no, I, that's fine, I'm fine with what we're offering, I'm fine with the motion, I'm fine with the second, I just, I wanted to give my part of the word.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Um, I recognize everything that, that everyone's saying here from a, you know, litigation background perspective when it comes to construction, especially on a major project like this, a large-scale project like this. It is beneficial to the parties and, and certainly B County to try to whittle away as much as we can the amounts that aren't in controversy. And this settlement agreement won't preclude us from being able to move forward with any additional issues, concerns, questions with respect to the project overall. It just, this just helps to whittle down again the vast majority of the undisputed charges that we do need to pay. So at that time, at this time, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four, two, one, thank you very much. Agenda item number twelve, Texas Water Development Board additional requirements for pending grant category for flood warning systems. Commissioner Dewitt, this is your idea before.
Well, what this is, Commissioners and Judge, is we got information from the Water Development Board, they needed more information about what we were going to do, one, one thing and another. And, and, and let me go into this in a little more detail. They have several hundred projects they're administering. They have health issues in their agency, I've talked to them, they've had COVID also, they're having to reassign projects to different people. An email that I got last Friday, they were giving us three business days to give them information that they're going to cut our project from the list. They listed our project as a DeWitt County Flood Control District number one. I'm sure what happened, they got my name and somebody said, oh, that's DeWitt County. So I sent them an email asking for clarity, if you will. And, and I want to give them a break, I was in the Austin headquarters, in offices like they work. And there's so much going on and so much hitting the hole at once, so many phone calls, they're going to make a few mistakes, so we have to bear with them, but we have to keep on the straight and narrow. Back to this issue, the gentleman I'm dealing with, his name is Mr. Reynolds. And I contacted our ICE representative, Ivan is here. And turns out they'd already done everything that needed to be done, I put a copy on y'all's desk, they had already completed all the data that was required and submitted to them. So they've done a fantastic job and I know that, that you'd like to say a few words, if you will, of what's going on and kind of where we are. And one thing I'd like for the court to remember, as we go through these deliberations, is how much of the human life worth we're putting in systems or will be putting in systems that will possibly save lives? So Ivan, if you will, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner, good morning. Good morning. As Commissioner Dewitt said, we had the Water Development Board requesting some more information. And one of those was preliminary engineering feasibility report. In the beginning, those guidelines did not specify that, but for our commitment to make sure we see this to fruition, we took care of that. And Mr. Charlie Carden, he's the lead senior engineer, is taking care of this. You know, we took care of this issue, I think, a little bit before you got notified. So we, we're working on those, on those issues. And I just want to let you know that, again, that's part of our commitment to make sure to see this application go through. The, it's past the administrative stage, which means that all the documentation they need, they're complete. Now there's the technical review part, technical review part, and that's when they're requested this document to be signed and sealed. So to give you a little more detail here, a couple of minutes, Mr. Charlie Carden is going to be ready to answer any technical, for, technical questions that we might have regarding this system. So, Mr. Carden?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioner, just real brief, again, Charlie Carden has ICE engineers. We did submit a preliminary engineering feasibility report, just basically asking or detailing what's involved with these systems and the tasks involved and things like that. Again, no calls to, to the county for that engineering report. At the same time, there are, I saw the same email, requiring, requesting some more details and some more details on the components that are going to be used and things like that. So rest assured that we have that information and three business days, we'll get it done by the end of the day, the information that they're requesting. I know we already submitted all that. submitted all that, uh, information, by the way. But, uh, rest assured that, that, that we are on it, on, on those, uh, issues. Uh, just real briefly, wanted to discuss a little bit about, last time I was here, we discussed a little bit about the, the field hardened equipment, is it bulletproof and things like that. Uh, there are different, different, uh, components that can be used, the more expensive ones are those bulletproof ones, that it's, it's made out of some kind of like, uh, I don't use the word Kevlar, but that kind of technology. Uh, but what, what like TechSod and the government uses a lot are these cabinets. You put the, the unit in the cabinet, like, it looks like one of those signal cabinets, you know, it's made out of metal, um, has a lock and, and an alarm system. So when, uh, when the, uh, lock or the cabinet is open, there's an alarm that goes to the foam or the skater system to know that the unit's been opened. Um, I was looking at the USGS website, and seems like there's a unit, by the way, in Medio Creek here in B County. So I don't know exactly where that, that unit is. I'm gonna go take a look at it and do a little bit of research, let you guys know where that USGS unit is at. But it is Medio Creek, not, not just B County, no, I'm sorry, Beville. So I just where that, uh, unit is at. So I'm gonna go look for it. Um, something that, um, that as engineers, we've got to do a little bit more of is, uh, we do a little more research of where these units are gonna go, what are the field conditions. I think that was one of the questions that we're asking, uh, what are the field conditions to exactly know what, what we're gonna look at. Uh, I know Commissioner Haggard had a question on the pros and cons between a radar unit and probe unit. Uh, we're still doing some of that, that kind of research. Um, and again, depending on the field conditions, what we want to use. I can tell you that the probe unit is cheaper in the upfront, in the upfront cost is more expensive for the radar unit, but there's more maintenance involved with the probe unit. Uh, there's more parts to it, if you will. Uh, the probe goes into the ground. Uh, it also, uh, you know, calibrates to where the flow of the water, maybe the flow of water, as the stream's going. So there's some more maintenance involved. I think there's, in some cases I've read, where it's, uh, 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 quarterly maintenance involved without there. So I know that that's an issue there.
That's all maintenance that the county has.
That's an, that's an issue there. So, uh, definitely, it's something to consider, you know, choices where we'll go with the radar unit or probe, because the probe unit has more maintenance.
Last time you were here, you also mentioned that there was something in Claybrook County?
Yes, yes, there, there's some, I think.
I can just say this to me, uh, I called them, but I, it's, you want to do it now?
No, I mean, I, I'm just-
Well, what, what happened, I called, I contacted Claybrook County, they were kind of hard to get ahold of, but I had a county commissioner call me back, Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Well, he and I were talking apples and oranges, it turns out, and he suggested that we have our merchant management party had to contact theirs and get the information.
Right.
The units that they have are what we already have in the county, Pawnee and other places. They're not the units that we're talking about here. But I asked Mr. Willow, he and I were talking, he was gonna contact Bear County, because we know they have the units that you're talking about.
Absolutely, yes.
So Mr. Willow may have some additional information for us.
They haven't got back to me, sir.
Not yet.
Okay. But what I got from Claybrook County, no problems at all.
Right.
But we were talking apples and oranges, because the ones they had are, are elevated, near the loudspeaker type, like I have in Pawnee and possibly Skidmore.
We already have that here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what they had. So that's what they had, but we're waiting to hear back from Bear County.
Okay. Um, that was another, just, that was another question y'all had last time that I was thinking of. The pros and cons, oh, oh, so, uh, the, the, and, and we were talking about it, and I even talked about it, that, and Commissioner Dewitt was, uh, mentioning how busy the Texas Water Development Board is. So we've learned that during the review process of these applications, that there are taking, the Texas Water Development Board is taking a longer time to go through this review. So we have originally said 18 months of this, of this project. Uh, we're looking at an extension of that project to about 24 to 36 months. Uh, because there's an environmental review, there's a design review, and there's other reviews, that they're gonna take longer over on the state. What does that mean for us? That means for us is on the in-kind services, it'll stretch it out from 18 months to 24 to 36 months. So now you have more time, uh, to meet some of those, uh, in-kind services goals, or to meet that goal of the in-kind services. So I wanted to bring that to you, to y'all's attention, if you will. I know that, that we mentioned that. But there are taking more longer on the environmental review and the design construction review as well.
And, and for the court, basically, what we're doing today is more housekeeping. This is not the no consent.
Absolutely.
We're, we're not there yet. This is, this, keep it moving forward. This has to be done, it's already been done. So, uh, my motion would be to continue to move forward.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, do, do you, uh, report on this project?
All right.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three, two, one. Moving on, agenda item number 13, approval of updated job description for the community affairs director. Commissioner, that is, I have you down as this is your item?
It's my item, because it was handed out to me, you know, so I cut it off.
Uh, I got with, uh-
That is, and it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good pass.
It's a good pass.
It's off the ball.
No, no, that's, that's, it ended on to me. Uh, I do gotta say that, um, Mr. Ross, you and I sat down together, and Mr. Dewitt emailed a copy of it, we revised it, we went through it, we tweaked it, and you should have a copy of it that you could read through. So if there's any other comments or changes, I would want to recommend.
I just have a comment or a question. Commissioner Dewitt, you're, you're in that position for several years. How, how does this relate to the job description now than when you were in, in, in charge?
Well, as Commissioner Frey has said, I, I spent one night and typed it up, so it's very reflective. It's, it's, it's there, it's there.
And it was there when you were there, pardon me.
No, 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 no. This is the one that's there. The one we had before was not there. This one is accurate. The one you're looking at now is accurate as to what goes on in that office. The one that was there before needed some updating, let's say. Uh, and, and one thing that I think we need to add too, is this is the, uh, floodplain administrators for the county. Uh, I, I forgot that. It's, it's in here about-
I, I thought it was in there already.
But I saw it.
Yeah, I, I thought I saw it was-
And it was the administrator.
There was only like four changes that I saw in there.
Four changes.
Yeah. The very first paragraph, I, I tweaked that very first paragraph, because it was said it was a non-manual work type, sitting behind your desk type thing. That's not, that's not what's supposed to be there. And, uh, the other one I took out is that you have, you were required to be a Texas P.O.S. I took that out. Okay, so there were two changes that I took out. And then, uh, I added on there, when you assist law enforcement, and I had some help from Mr. Jones, when you assist law enforcement is when they have a rabies call, when they have trash thrown on the side of the road, that, or an environmental call, spill, stuff like that, that they get called out to. I added those to that line. It was just a short line.
It's crazy, it, it was being known under your watch, when you were there, these changes?
Yes.
But that, it, it wasn't changing.
No, this, this, somehow this position description, I, I don't know how it got like it wound up, but there were some things in here that just, they just didn't make sense. Like being a physician, sitting in the office, it didn't make sense.
You know, because I've been over there several times, and I, you know, you're sitting behind a desk, and hey, you need to address this. Hey, my description says I just sit behind my desk, that's it. That's not true.
Yeah. I think, Commissioner, where you see it is, it's a certificates and license required, is a FEMA floodplain manager certificate.
Right.
So that would make him the-
The floodplain.
Okay, so we don't need to say anything?
Oh, that's, that's-
But if he has that, then that means that-
Yeah, because technically, if you want to get the technicality, the county judge is the official floodplain administrator for B County. But that's, 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 that responsibility is always, always delegated to either county management or another agency, because the ultimate decision comes back to you, sir. But, but it's not something you want to do, trust me. Because you'd be out there on the bridge, and they can go, okay, we're not putting a, not putting a hat hook up.
Those are just some of the, there were some small changes on there that-
I, I didn't see a whole lot.
It needed housekeeping, basically. Uh, that, that, that department does a lot, and it's a lot of little things that come together and, and it amounts to a whole lot of everything. And it has to be done expeditiously on a regular basis, and there's no room for, there's three people in that office, I guarantee you, all three of them should be working every day outside of the office, doing what needs to be done. Between junkyards and restaurant inspections, litter control, subdivision regulations, floodplain, rabies control, it goes on and on and on, and it's a very busy office. But the way it was written before, only two of them had to go out of the office. And, and I agree with Commissioner Frey, we didn't feel like that was proper. We don't have any luxury.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate. Wait, do we have a motion?
I made a motion.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 14, Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Tools 2021 Liability Coverage Renewal for General Auto Physical Damage Law Enforcement, Public Officials Liability Coverages. This is a housekeeping matter.
Housekeeping, correct? Uh, yes, no, it is, and it just went, it went at $6,000, and that was for the increase in the, uh, sheriff's office fleet.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Second.
I have a motion, multiple seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Did you get the second on that one? No further objections.
One comment I'd like to make, it also has our sheriff's office, our sheriff's foreman, our sheriff's office drawn on it, our aircraft. Very interesting.
Um, agenda item number 15, submission of 2020 tax rule to governing body out for section 2609 E of the Property Tax Code. This is a housekeeping matter, Ms. Mattis is at a conference, so unfortunately, huh? Yeah, uh, everybody's got a chance to review it. I know she's, uh, very excited to continue to get this, uh, this textual done.
Move it forward, probably.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 16, update discussion and possible action regarding B County COVID-19 status preparedness and contingency planning. Um, I'll give you the floor in a minute, uh, Mr. Willow, if you have some things that you'd like to, to kind of let us know about what's going on. I'd just say, uh, as an initial matter, um, we, uh, we are moving forward. You know, last, uh, last Commissioners' Court meeting, y'all, uh, were, uh, comfortable and, and kind enough to allow me the discretion to proceed, uh, with, uh, purchasing, entering an order to purchase Rapid Test, uh, Rapid Test Solution, uh, which is a two-component process. Uh, one is actually acquiring the test machine and, and test units themselves, and the second component is to engage a professional that has the appropriate licensure to be able to operate that by through and on behalf of the county. Uh, we have those, those, they are not quite yet finalized, but I anticipate, uh, by today or tomorrow, we'll have those orders, uh, in, and, uh, and we'll be able to, to have yet another, uh, option that we can roll out, uh, quickly and efficiently for, uh, not only affected county, uh, uh, departments, uh, city departments, our local ISDs, um, and, uh, and so that's, uh, that's something I think is really promising. So I did want to let y'all know that. I think, uh, I, I don't remember the number, I might, might remember the number. I think we're at 13, 1,312 or 13 now. Um, total cases, we are continuing to see, uh, I would say over the course of the last two to three weeks, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick. It hasn't been great, um, and that's been good. Uh, but certainly, we're not out of the woods, and, uh, with the new administration that will be coming in January 1st, uh, it will be interesting to see how that impacts statewide planning with respect to vaccinations, um, and, uh, and additional resources or, uh, uh, prescriptive, uh, orders on how we can conduct, uh, and move forward, uh, beginning in January 2021. But overall, um, you know, I, I'm still very pleased with the efforts of all of our, uh, administrators and employees, uh, not only from the county perspective, uh, but from our ISDs and other, other local government units, as well as from our citizens, uh, in their continued adherence to social distancing practices and, uh, Governor of Texas's mask mandate. Um, so for those of, for those of us that know, uh, individuals who are suffering from COVID, uh, we do have several individuals in, in this county that are hospitalized, that are facing serious potential consequences, and our, uh, our, our thoughts really go out to them, and our prayers, uh, for their rapid recovery. We're so fortunate in B County that we actually have a hospital, and we don't just have any old hospital. We have an amazing hospital that has done an amazing job, not only partnering with the county and the city, with our COVID Coalition, but with their own operations internally within the four walls of the hospital to maintain integrity and safety, uh, in the light, uh, in, in light of, uh, of this, um, this coronavirus pandemic. Uh, Mr. Willow, I think that's about all the rambling I can deal. See the floor, see the remainder of my 30 minutes to give.
Uh, I would be able to take up 29 seconds.
Thank you.
Mike Willow, virtue manager, um, there's a couple things. I'd just like to pass this around to you. It's late, hot off the press. It's something that I'd like to consider later on. Uh, but first, I don't know how many people saw the 60 Minutes clip last night about, uh, uh, Operation Hyperdrive or whatever it's called, I don't know, but the-
Warp Speed.
Warp Speed, thank you. Hy, yeah. Um, the government is getting a whole bunch of, uh, the vaccine ready, and they're coming up with a plan to push it out. They're, at the present time, they're looking at maybe December for a select few, and then maybe through March, the rest will be. Um, one of the things they talk about, the weakest link of the, of the whole program, is that it takes two vaccines. You have a vaccine, and then 21 days later, you have follow-up. And so their big challenge is to have enough vaccine for the second go-round. So that's what they're working on. Now, the military, and, and another drawback of this program, is that it has to be dry-iced, uh, super cold, uh, which is something that locally we don't have, the dry ice factory, whatever. Throw something out of the line, I'm, I'm making contact with some of the, um, chiralogenic plants that we have. Maybe we might be able to tap into that resource. I have no idea what, how they do their thing. It was just something I thought, maybe just try. Haven't got a reply back yet. They probably have to stop laughing. So, but anyway, that's, we're working on that. There's a possibility that the military will stop doing testing around the 15th of this month. Um, having said that, I'm wondering if it has to do with the government changing its mission from, uh, testing to vaccination. So I don't know. Um, we tested yesterday at the Coliseum. Uh, it was nice to be back home to do testing there again, I have to say. Uh, so we, only about 30 citizens showed up to be tested. So, uh, on the other hand, um, we had a, a situation where we had to extend our, uh, testing with the Coalition to accommodate, uh, one of the independent school districts, which we gladly did, and so we took care of that. And safe to say, and it's good to, you know, everything was negative. So, you know, we were happy with that, and it was, you know, it worked well. Everything that we're doing, I want you to know that I have Julia Giddin as, uh, administrative assistant, and Ryan Garza, who was working from home. Those guys, those folks, uh, are, are hitting the ground running, they're doing good, they're making my job a lot easier. Um, not that I want anything else to do, but I'm just saying.
Good to know.
You know, but, uh, you know, and we can come up with something.
You can come up with floodplains.
Having said that, let me, uh, show you what, uh, I came across this app that I'd like to look at. It's, it's, honestly, I feel it's too late to get it on the COVID-19 wish list. However, I still want to go through with it and have it on the shelf in case they come back and say, hey, you know, we're gonna extend it another couple months, and we'll have everything done. Um, in order for me to even have this- Um, in order for me to even have this application, then I have to go through Commissioners Court again. So we'd have to have a special call meeting. Then we'd have to get it to Tedom, and then Tedom would have to respond and give the vaccines by Friday. So Ms. April could put it in the paperwork. That, that's too late, you know, it, it, it won't be done, and, and I realize that. Uh, if we, if we had a super stringent emergency, we could get it done, but not for one, okay? Uh, so, uh, I think though that this is something we want, might wanna look at, uh, on the sideline because this packet will allow the county to put out all the information we need on an app. Now, it's amazing the statistics that I wasn't aware of, but eighty-five percent of the people have phones with an app, you know, where they can, smartphones now, you know, it's now more, uh, you know. So I think Mr. Lazembe and maybe one other person in the county doesn't believe in, uh, states don't have flip phones. But anyway, I just wanted to pass that out to, you know, to maybe Witterpally. And, yeah, I saw you underline the dollar amount, sir, but, uh, that's why I was thinking COVID money would be there. So, but anyway, I would like, you know, just to look at that. If there's any questions, call the office. You'll have to call my landline, three six one six two one one five six seven, uh, because of the phone changing and everything. So by all means, uh, we're there. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Willow. Is there any questions?
No, one comment is, I, I underlined that just for one reason, and that's...
He highlighted it, I underlined it.
In case I have to find that money.
Okay.
Um, I, I did wanna just say that that CRF is due, uh, the thirteenth, and that is a D-day, uh, for anything, um, you know, coming down the pike. So, uh, that's around the corner.
And all our department heads and elected officials know if they have any expenditures. I guess I would all come to your office anyway, so there's really nothing that you need from...
No, this is the last kind of dangling, you know, um, thing that we had, uh, to add or not add. So I don't, I don't know if we need to add this, or I'm not sure what...
Well, we, the, the way it goes is the deadline of November thirteenth is for us to identify what we plan on spending. And then on December fifteenth, we have, right, December fifteenth, we have to submit all of our actual expenditures, which is interesting. We don't have it till the end of the year, right? Am I correct on this? We have it till December fifteenth to submit everything to the state. I guess they get fifteen days or something to turn around and give it all to the best, or however the process is gonna work. But it, they did move up the timeframe a little bit, and so, um...
So it's here.
Um, yeah. You know, and we don't, you know, I, I appreciate Mr. Willow, uh, identifying this prospect and, and bird-dogging it. I don't know, I don't know if he's even had the opportunity to, you know, engage with, uh, our IT director to talk about how the maintenance and support for it would, would go. You have...
Yes, sir. We've had, uh, video conferences and what have you. In fact, um, tried to get Commissioner, but he has signed along with April, but for some reason, they wouldn't let me. They wouldn't let me.
Oh, no comment.
Yeah, sorry. But it's, uh, it's a good, IT's not involved.
Okay.
At all. And, for example, the sheriff's department would have their person that would control just what goes on in the sheriff's department. Virtue management, just what goes on in virtue management. And I also included the police department on there as well for the city. They would have their own. So Mike Willow would not...
Yeah, I know, but...
Do the whole thing. It's each individual administrator for their...
So there, is there any reason why, uh, is this something that would be more reasonable if the deadline was December fifteenth to complete the process?
Oh, sure. To me, my understanding of it was the longest, you know, paid the longest time when we need them to approve it or disapprove it. And I thought that had to be done, you know, by this Friday.
In April, if we put it on the November thirteenth, uh, document to the state, and we ultimately don't acquire it, it would adjust the numbers. Do we know what category of expenditure that this for purposes, care doc, is it category one, two, or three?
Did we look at the category, Grace?
I wanna say communication. I want...
Uh, was it, it was, was it four?
I believe it was four because there's an app on there for COVID- nineteen.
So it's four, it, it's four of the twenty-five percent?
Yeah, four is not part of, it's the one, two, three that's part of the, that we have to meet the, yes. And, and I'm surprised you said four, 'cause I was thinking it was, it was like two, but, uh, I mean, I'm not sure.
It makes a big difference, right?
It does. It does make a big difference.
Then there's not a, there's not a matching component required for the primary expenditures, testing, direct, uh, employee expenses. The way the care doc, it's the, if it's category four, it falls down same as the school connectivity, which I guess has changed a little bit too, and it's now not part of the overall...
Con, connectivity is four, is, is four.
Right.
And, um, and the sheriff's office, uh, uh, microbial is four also. And we just submitted, um, that to Tedom. Uh, we haven't heard anything, hopefully.
How would, how would this impact the ratio?
Well, first of all, I'm not sure if it's two or four. Um, so we just have to go, uh, back with Grace and kinda look at that table to see where it falls into.
I'm thinking if y'all are comfortable with granting out this order to proceed in earnest, try to meet the December fifteenth deadline, get it back in front of us to actually either vote it up or vote it down. If you would give, uh, myself, Mrs. Cantu, and I guess you just gave myself, and then I'll work with, uh, Mrs. Cantu and Mr. Willow, uh, to see if we can get it on, give it, give us some direction. If you're, if, if the will of the court is, uh, to, to allow us to bird-dog it a little bit, then we could, we could put it on the November thirteenth. By Nov, by Friday, we'll, we can answer the questions that we're asking right now, and if, if it would work with the, with the rubric of the twenty-five seventy-five, uh, then we can proceed with comfort. And if not, then we can just not do it.
You said it might be a category four, category two.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm just not sure.
But I know one of the main reasons that it, it's care doc related is because it promotes, uh, you know, information distancing, you know, and the fact that it's, uh, information for the COVID- nineteen, you know, that if, if the court would like, I could, uh, set up a Zoom meeting, conference, whatever you all would like, you know, to do that.
Can without public evidence.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. It's, it could all be done, you know.
What, what you can do, Judge, is do all you just said you want to do. Just do it. We come back to thirteen percent. We, we, we get...
Well, this is a, this is a, uh, an action item.
It does fall under that.
I mean, it's, it's a broad action item, but it's, it is an action item. Uh, but that's fine. I'm, I'm happy with doing it the, the other way too. Just, just as long as, if, does anybody have any, I guess I'd ask for any comments or, or concerns, just to provide additional context.
I think it's a good idea just what you just stated.
We, we don't have any. That's fine. I, we can, I just, if there's any...
You know, it, it does fall under... I, I agree. This is, this is, this is, uh, Mike has never brought us anything that hasn't been very helpful to the county in whole.
The drop-down screening, huh?
Well, that was for me. That was for him, for the county. Let's, let's, let's move Mike out of there. But again, uh, I agree. I mean, we can, we can throw it in there.
Okay.
The Ms. April will find out where it stands. Throw it in there. Thirteenth, we can either go yes or no, or we can move back the other way.
Okay, thank you all very much. We'll, we'll proceed and see what we can, uh, see what we can figure out and run through, and, and, uh, bring it back to you the next, hopefully the next agenda. I have the, the tech action on it specifically. Thank you guys for your input. And thank you, Mr. Willow, for, again, for bringing this. And by extension, uh, you and Ryan. So we know it's, it's a great team that you have, uh, and every time you get up and present, and all of the solutions that you're bringing and providing to us, we do, we do recognize that it's a, it's a team of people, uh, behind you. But they have got great leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything, uh, further? I don't have, oh, wait, I do have one, one thing. There was, no, 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 this was, you, you gave me the idea. Um, so, uh, the county, uh, just this county, uh, COVID discussion, um, the, I think Candy in my office has sent out an email to, uh, the various departments with respect to our Thanksgiving planning. Um, and as it stands right now, what we're looking at is, uh, we're looking at the, um, being able to provide what, what our county employees have become used to and enjoy as far as a, a Thanksgiving celebration, by doing so in a manner, if possible, uh, and weighing the risks of COVID exposure, unnecessary COVID exposure. So as it stands right now, if, if anybody is, uh, feels strongly one way or the other, I believe we do have an email out. Um, you can respond to that email, or you can call, uh, Candy or Delores directly and, and let us know your thoughts. We would like to gauge, uh, the, uh, the feeling of our elected officials, department heads, and employees. Um, but it is something that we are looking at, and it, it, it will very likely, it will be regardless of what we decide to do. It will be different than it has been in years past, um, just through COVID.
Here's a thought for what it's worth. Those that maybe feel like, uh, shouldn't go, we could set up something to go and have delivered to their offices. That way they could just, hey, I mean, just a thought.
Yes. So, yeah, any ideas like that are, are all good, and, and we wanna bring it because, again, it's important, uh, you know, and I, I, I seek for all of the commissioners up here. It's important for us to be able to, uh, uh, provide little benefits and treats like that to everybody in the county. Uh, not only to celebrate Thanksgiving from a Thanksgiving perspective, but also to recognize and acknowledge the tireless efforts of our employees, the ones that we, we don't see every other week, you know, the army of people behind, uh, uh, Ray, the, the army of people behind Sheriff Southmaid, everybody in the offices, the auditor's office, and the clerk's office, and so on and so forth. Um, things like these are great. They bring us together as, uh, as an entity and as a people. That's all I got. Is there anything else, any other COVID-related?
No, I, I just wanted to comment, Commissioner, uh, here with this thing about, and yours, about the inspiring efforts of, um, and I guess every time we go to a conference, we always tell them, it's not us that looks good, it's the people that work for us that make us look good to the county. Um, and it's, it's everybody. It's Ray and his people, it's, it's, uh, April and her staff, it's the staff. It's, uh, they, they meet every day with, with the community, and, uh, I just, I just feel like, I'm just proud to have them working for us and doing what they can to make us look good.
You're here. Anything for us? All right, we have no executive session, oh, we have no executive, oh, you were anticipating me calling. Agenda item number seventeen, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion in a second and further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Uh, motion passes without exception. We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody.